All right, it's 6:00 PM, so let's go ahead and get everything started so we can so we can give a motion up. We have a pretty big agenda. So I have a meeting order at 6 o'clock and Mr. Powell, would you do us the honor? Please?
Thank you.
Let's pray. Father, we are so grateful to be here in a beautiful town with chamber commerce weather going on. Lord, it's just spectacularly beautiful. It feels like spring and there is anticipation in the air that we give you thanks for. It's summers here and a good time. And we just pray a blessing over Walnecro that this city will have a spectacularly good time in this season. Lord, we thank you for a new budget and ask you to bless that consideration and its numbers and dollars, Lord, but it's the citizens' most important work. And we just pray that you would bless what happens so that it can be implemented plan that makes the city greater and one that uses the citizens' dollars efficiently as they want it to be, Lord, without waste or without any of those things that create controversy. We just pray. And we thank you for the spectacular presentation that took a lot of work to make, but it's really simple, Lord. And we just ask that you would bless people to read it and understand it and endorse it and be excited about that too, Lord. For all those who worked on it, we give you thanks and ask you to bless. And we thank you for this city, for all its hard workers to keep the streets in good order and safe and the utilities on and government working, Lord. And we ask you to bless every one of them. Be with our citizens and watch over and keep them safe in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, we'll call. Everybody is present, including our attorneys, Jay Crowley and Tony Powell. And agenda approval. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda for tonight's public hearing meeting.
Second, is there any discussion? Okay, there's no discussion. All in favor to approve the motion to approve the agenda? Raise your hand.
I'm on.
Okay, give me a message. Anybody against? Okay, at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion to open the public hearing. So moved. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
I am.
Okay, all in favor? And at this point, if anybody would like to speak about the public hearing?
On the subject of?
On the subject of, what? The budget, sorry. Sorry. I'm just amazed there's nobody here. Nobody?
I've got some questions.
But we're going to do our discussion during our meeting.
Just don't get that down.
Okay, absolutely. Okay, seeing as there's nobody to speak in the public hearing, I ask for a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. Is there a second?
One second.
Any discussion? Okay, you are in favor, please raise your hand. All in favor, okay. Thank you. With that, we are going to go back to the regular meeting, the called meeting, or the, and I will ask if, we're going into old business, right? Okay, there we go. Going into old business.
When do we discuss the budget?
That's right after this one.
Okay.
Budget discussion is the next one. Erin Watley with LMCO.
Number two under old business.
That's right, Erin. Oh, okay, I've got.
The new one came out.
Okay, I've got a wrong copy.
You don't have a new one? On the new budget that, or the new agenda that Kimberly sent out yesterday, because two things were added. The budget discussion under old business is number two and under new business, number nine, is the sewer plant a-cutting in Riverdale.
Okay.
Do you feel good now? Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So Erin Watley with LMCO, that is the company, the engineering company that we decided to go with about the Emerald Cove project. And you have all had his recommendation for the past week. And he could not be here today, but he will be at our next council meeting on June 13th to answer any questions you have. The next step, and we're not moving on yet, the next step would be to ask him any questions and then decide if we're going to go out for bid or what the, what step we're going to take on rectifying the situation in Emerald Cove, based on this recommendation and also on any questions you have during that meeting. Okay, is there any discussion about his recommendation that he put forth that you all have had?
I would like to say that I was able to be there to meet with him and the county anywhere about this, and I am confident between all the experts that we see, I trust his judgment on this as far as his recommendation that he's read to us. So I look forward to seeing him here from the council.
I want you all to know too, the $300,000 to $400,000, he did say that filling the gutter with asphalt was an option, but his recommendation was to go ahead and mill and inlay, which would mean basically doing it over again. And his estimation was $300,000 to $400,000 to do the whole project. I want you all to know that we are looking at different options. He brought up a, something we'd never heard of before, and it was called, I believe, micro, wasn't it, micro paving? And it's something new that Winder is doing on a lot of their streets, and he's setting up some addresses so we can go look at it. It takes a little bit longer to set up because there is a different product in it than just pavement. But once I get those addresses, I will go ahead and forward them on to council so you can go take a look also. So we can ask him a little bit more about that at our next meeting, and we will have a discussion at that meeting. And I know it's not normally a discussion time at a council meeting, but since he was, he was already previously engaged for this meeting, we'll go ahead and take the time during our council meeting to go ahead and ask those kind of questions, okay?
I do have, I don't think it's in here. I know that there's been a few conversations with the county and how the paving job was done previously. The county has sort of said that they realized that there was some issues done. This $300,000 to $400,000 price, does that include, is that a paving company doing it or the county repaving it?
It is a outside company doing milling and paving. If we were to go back and engage the county in just the paving, because they cannot mill, they don't have the machinery. They do have a new paving piece of equipment, which is a smaller and it can be more adjustable to do roads just like ours in a neighborhood. So that is an option. And if we did go with them, we wouldn't pay for the labor because of our IGA, we would just pay for the product.
So it could come in cheaper.
It could come in cheaper, yes.
I've got a question.
Okay.
It states on option two, this contract will need to include concrete removal and repair at all locations homeowners that fill the gutter in. So the homeowners that are fixed the gutters themselves?
Yes, they have. There are.
And the city shouldn't have to pay to refit it?
Well, it's a, we discussed that. And in an effort to offset the bumps that happened because of the paving, a lot of homeowners decided to put 11 or so, actually, there were a few who were already done, decided to put in pavement in the gutter to not experience that bump.
But the city shouldn't pay for that?
I would say on 11 in Emerald Cove, obviously, and I had to personally replace the motor mount in my vehicle. That was very costly. And had I put that concrete in the gutter, I may not have had to replace that motor mount. And I don't think it's going to add a whole bunch to the city's cost to remove that, what is it, six, seven feet of concrete in front of the draftways?
And it's already been discussed in previous, in the previous years that we've been dealing with this and recently, that the city made a mistake. And these people were reacting to that mistake to make their life more comfortable. Now, we can ask if that's what council wants to do, to ask these people to remove this at their expense again?
To put it in at their expense.
Or what we can do is remove that at the city's costs because they did it because the city made a mistake. So we can, you guys can make that decision about that when we get to that. So y'all can decide on that. Okay? Is there any more discussion on that?
No, but I do, I do want to say, I'm of the mindset that those gutters would not have been filled had there not been an issue to begin with. I know a couple of them were filled because of wheelchair access to their mailboxes. And I think if we start talking to citizens about, you know, paying to, to remove that when they paid to fill it to accommodate their immediate needs, we're putting ourselves possibly in a position to a situation that we don't need to be. So I think we take care of the problem that we have and probably as minimal, or else it would have been mentioned in here that to remove that would be, you know, an extreme extra cost or something. So I'm of the mindset that it's, it's our responsibility to fix what we, what we've got going.
I am in agreement if it makes members of council feel better to have that separated in cost to see what that cost is, just so, yeah.
We can see that definitely. Also, I want to remind you guys, on this recommendation that he has sent, his phone number is there, his address is there, and his email is there. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to Mr. Watley. He is very agreeable to speaking with our members of council. And if you have any more questions before the meeting, go ahead and give him a call. I'm sure he would be wide open to that, okay?
And he's coming to the next council meeting. He will be at the council meeting on June 13th, yes.
So everybody ready to move on?
Yes.
We're going to go ahead and go on to the 2425 budget discussion. And why don't we just go ahead and as you guys have questions, go ahead and let's discuss that topic. Is there anybody who has any questions?
The first question I have is on page 23. Where it says, in order to avoid a tax increase, we will be reverting back to sanitation being an individual expense for each property owner?
Yes.
There's no need to do that because our income is up, for one thing. It's going to keep going up with taxes. And there's no need to increase our taxes or renew on the sanitation fees.
Do you know what the garbage collection is going up to in the very near future for the city?
You know, I haven't been on any business.
The cost of garbage is going to go up to $16 a month. Right now, we're spending over $120,000 a year on garbage.
The negotiated contract?
We are. We are. Something to keep in mind is that while garbage may go back into the homeowners or the property owners', you know, responsibility, there may be other allowances in taxes that would help to offset that.
What?
Let me point out some things regarding why we're, part of why we even considered going to that.
I have another question too.
Can we answer the question you asked first?
Let Maxine go ahead and speak.
Okay. One reason we consider going back to this was because the legalities of how it was handled and how it would need to be handled in the future. We got lots of legal advice in several different areas, being all the way up to the state level from financial people. Also, we've spoken with other mayors and cities and different things. And from a standpoint of how we're providing the service of sanitation, there was a question in many of their minds as to whether we could count that as a service we're giving the city when all we're doing is paying for it. That the service provided was more like a, it was several times referred to as an illegal gratuitity. And then there was concern there that it would be considered an illegal gratuitity.
Well, I want to say we've had two experts. We've had Tony and we've had Mike Malcolm. And to my knowledge, neither one of them has said anything about it being illegal.
I'm only telling.
Is it illegal?
You mean, you mean providing garbage service?
To my knowledge, maybe you and Mayor Moore talked about it, but to my knowledge, I've never heard it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to ask that question.
Tony, let me explain to you that when they use that term, when this was put in place, you were not on board.
My mouth was, and he had no issues with it.
And I reached out then to the then council and mayor, and I reached out to several people, Rucy Patel being one. I don't recall names right now, but I reached out to probably about a dozen people. And the reason it was more or less considered an illegal gratuitity the way it was put into place was because it was in lieu of property tax reduction because we were in a position to reduce property taxes. And the mayor at the time decided that the better option was to give away the sanitation instead of lowering property tax. So that was because of the way it was looked at. That was why that term has come up.
Well, we would, we would have to look closely at how that pretty determined. There are things about that that could be improperly done. Garbage is a legitimate city problem and burden usually. And so there are legitimate ways to set up garbage collection. What is a little unusual is that it's not paid for by the, by the person who's, who's getting, because everybody's lining on the process usually. So, so the, I'd say that is, I don't know many places where, where it's not passed through to the city one way or another. So but it certainly can be set up for the city to use its budget money to, to pay for it. I know we can do all those things. Do just whatever y'all, whatever y'all want to do.
I mean, it will certainly be up entirely to all of council how we do that. One thing we're trying to do to help the citizens with that, of course, is that we would, we would be picking up the cost for half the year this year. It would not go into effect until January. So that gives time for people to prepare as well as for us to put together the best and most efficient and least expensive way and the best contract we can with someone, you know, hoping to do better than $16 a household. And that's the best price that's been mentioned at this point. And there's no guarantee we're going to get that. So we've, we've got to make sure we cover ourselves however we do it. And if we cover it the other way, we're going to have to, instead of lowering taxes, increase taxes.
It's no need to, who you want.
Then you need to show us where we're going to get the money. Tell me where we get the other funding to cover that field. You say there's enough money there. Show me where. You're going to pull it from somewhere or show me where we can reduce. Come on, look at these numbers. I've lived these numbers for three months, 10 and 12 hours a day.
And that's another thing. It states in our charter that the budget is presented to council by the mayor and the city clerk. It doesn't say that it's created by another council member. Of course, you're going to vote for what you put in here.
No, it does say that there could be a committee. And there was a committee. And I presented the budget to council. This is my budget. The final numbers are my numbers based upon the research that Maxine did and I did.
I did research. I didn't make the budget.
No, she did not.
I did the research, the background work because the numbers that we had to work with. Let me give you an example, Linda.
While we're on trash, can we, I had a citizen reach out to me with a few questions. And I'm just going to read exactly what those questions say and see what, yeah. They notice on page 11, the collection charges anticipate $60,000 in revenues. Is this an indication that the city is contemplating reinstating a garbage collect fee on the residents of Monona Grove? So just to be clear, what the current budget is proposing is we are doing away with garbage and the city will collect a fee for that? And that means we will bill citizens quarterly?
Yes, but no. The city will negotiate a contract with a garbage pickup company on the half of all the residents in order to get us the lowest price possible for a household. But the city will mill on the foot of Bill's Road.
Starting in January of 2025?
Yes. And it would be billed quarterly?
On page 12, total personnel services and benefits, projects, total expenses at $414,300, an increase of $152,990 over the $261,310 included in the 2324 budget. Does this contemplate adding staff?
Yes, it does.
That was on my list too. Who are we looking at hiring?
We're looking at different scenarios. Part of that money also reflects raises for our employees. We're looking at possibly a city administrator, possibly a bookkeeper, but more likely we're leaning towards a city administrator.
A city administrator and city planner, is that same thing?
No, city administrator deals more with policy procedure. We're looking to possibly bring somebody on who can help us get where we need to be, that we haven't been for ever. Somebody who's educated, who has educated in that, has gotten a degree in city management along those lines, and hopefully be able to get somebody that we can afford and move into a city manager position in the future when the city grows even more. There are cities out there right now that are smaller than us that have city administrators in there, city managers in there. We have had situations in the past where decisions have been made that were not based on expertise. They were made without taking into consideration all of the different things that a city administrator or a city manager would know because they've been educated and worked in that field for many years. And so that's what we're looking at, is bringing them.
But that brings me back to our charter. It states on our charter that Walnecro is governed by a strong mayor for council members. So would require a change of the charter?
It also allows for city manager. It also allows for a city administrator. And it says that in our charter. Is that true?
It is. All of those things are true. Some of them are unfortunate. Not the way they should be. To have a, a strong mayor and a city manager inside your charter is a little unusual. And it's not, it's not defined as even normal, say, city manager being defined. City administrator is, is a different, different type of government operation. You stick with a strong mayor in that operation, it's just administrative position underneath a strong mayor. And that's, that's why it's called, that's why it's got that name. It's a specialty name, city administrator to fill that role. When you're stepping from just being a volunteer executive to having professional leadership that goes to be there. So, but it doesn't require charter change.
But if we did have, I'm, well, I like to see a administrator idea. It would probably cut down our legal services. It would probably cut down on quite a few professional services.
Accounting, engineering.
And it would also most likely bring in some money, things like grants that they are very familiar with. So it could offset itself very easily. But it's nice to have it in, you know, budgeting for it. So if it is to start up, then those, those funds are there. They need, they're worth it to be, yes.
In order to even consider that as an option, we have to have it in our budget. Otherwise, we can't even consider it. So we have to make consideration to that in our budget. And if we're going to consider these as options, we may opt in the best we need is a high-end bookkeeper. We may opt that we need a city administrator. But in order to have the funds there for whatever we decide, we've got to have the funds there. So it had to be put in there, so.
You can't just discover those funds.
So the mayor found a place to.
I will, the last question that the citizen had was on page 14, hotel and parking, $15,000.
That's correct.
Where are we planning on going?
Arizona. No, I'm kidding.
That includes $8,000?
No. That includes all of the travel. When we went to the convention last year, parking was, my parking was $25 a day. Any of the conferences that we go on, there is always parking involved. If we go over to Athens and we go to the, the Providence Institute, there's parking over there, parking fees.
We have training that sometimes is not available locally. You know, our clerk has to go for training. It's rarely that it's local. So we have to pay for hotels for her if we go to conference. And we're scheduled to go this year, you know. So you assume that next year, council will also want to attend. And so you've got five people going. Next year, the clerk could also be going. We don't know. So you've got to accommodate for those. And prices have gone up. This year, I mean, you know, you look at what we're spending this year for hotels and parking. And then that would include our juts when we have to do, is continuing, any continuing education.
Our public works guys are going to be going on training in different areas. So yeah.
So now to accommodate.
Do you have a suggestion that we need to bring it down to?
That's what it's for. It just seems, it seems high.
I will be honest with you, Linda. It looked high to me. And I kept going back over the numbers thinking, okay, well, if we had this and this and this, where does that land? So and what I did was I looked back at previous conferences, previous trainings, and what the cost was for different individuals and knowing that we're planning to have these people continue to be educated and do even better.
I will say that that's a lot of money. And I think we need to kind of guard it and watch it. And just because it's there, we don't need to, we need to go out and spend it. We need to be.
Well, in order to, in reverse, you have to have a receipt, correct?
You have to have a receipt. You have to have it signed up by me and another council member.
Before you even.
Oh, before you, yeah, yeah. And another thing that I'm going to be instituting is when we come back from our conferences, I'm going to ask everybody to bring their yellow sheets. And then also start keeping a listing that we can go ahead and put out there for citizens to see of all of the classes we've taken. We can get that from GMA easily. We can each have access to our home. But I think if we're going to be spending citizens' money, we need to justify it. And we need to make sure that they see that we are actually going to train.
I want to bring something else up. Under line 52.37, Training and Education, this will be where it's offset. I felt like in 2024 budget, there was $17,000 in Training and Education. I'm assuming that hotel and parking was included in that $17,000. And now it's just separated where you actually see the training was this, the parking was this, and the hotel was this.
That's exactly right.
And part of that goes to the way the state chart of accounts is set up. A lot of what is currently on our chart of accounts was set up with incorrect chart of account numbers, which made it very confusing when you're looking at, because trying to figure out what we spent from A to B, did it match up? So when we, you know, that's where I dug in. I looked, I looked at the bills. I literally pulled in voices for Kimberly, trying to pull stuff from me, bothering her because I wanted to make sure we were coming. because I wanted to make sure we were comparing apples to apples where we could. And that was what I was going to show you a minute ago, Linda. I literally took sheets. These were like just a list. And I literally made spreadsheets and I color-coded. These are utility bills. I couldn't tell what was where when I opened and looked at the reports. You couldn't tell what we were paying for any of them. So I had to dig out the bills and look at account numbers and stuff. And I color-coded what they're all paying for. In fact, that's how we ended up finding out that we've been paying somebody else's utility bill for three years.
Another city's.
Another city. We've been paying one of their utility bills for three years. So I did that with almost all the larger accounts. I did it with the attorney's accounts. When I saw the attorney bill, no offense, oh my gosh, what are we paying for the attorney? We need somebody else. That's where my brain went. So I started digging in. I did my chart. Yellow is our city attorney. Green is our judge. He's under our legal fees. The orange-looking one is our solicitor.
But I said not be under legal fees.
No, he's under... He's now on this chart going to be under our court judge. Our solicitor will be under the solicitor. This blue one was a separate attorney that was hired for something else. I don't even know what.
For Emerald Co.
For Emerald Co., okay? Almost $4,000 for him. So when I took those out, I breathed a little sigh because my mind had said, okay, we probably should be paying $25, $30, maybe a little more, somewhere in that range for the attorney. And I think I came out at $29. So I'm like, okay, I feel better. They just weren't split out correctly. Not that they're wrong or bad numbers or anything wrong with the numbers themselves. It's just where they were put in the books. It was hard to determine what's... How do you figure out how to make a budget out of this? Because if we had gone by what was under legal fees, we would have made a budget of $55,000, $60,000 to cover legal fees. And then I'd have been saying, well, but we've got to pay our judge and we've got to pay this. And our attorney would... I mean, our budget would have been much higher. But by breaking those down, even though they don't match up when you look at the numbers for where we are currently, maybe two points on our budget. That's how we got to that, was trying to hone in a little bit more on what are we actually paying for and give it a little more accurate so it's a little easier to follow. So.
Are you finished, Mel? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, I just want people to kind of understand why some of these numbers also look like, well, why do you have $16,000 today and your budget's only got $8,000? That doesn't make sense. That may be why it doesn't make sense. And I'm happy if anybody wants to ask any specific why not, like between now and when we vote on it, sit down with you, cover those on what I found. Now, some of it may be stuff that the mayor's made a decision based on what she wanted to do. You know, but as far as the digging in, I can help with that.
And that's something I want to go ahead and bring up. And I should have started with this guy. I need you to look at page 14, please. And where... Look at 52.2260, liability insurance. Page 14. Look in the second column.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
52.2260, under liability insurance. I'd originally put in $24,000 because that is what I was basing that upon last year. We've gotten this year's bill and it went up to a little higher than 27. So we now need to get it up to 32 because that's what we're going to be paying for next year, okay?
Where is that?
52.2260.
Liability insurance.
Oh, I thought it was 60.
I originally put in 24. I need to change that number to 32, but we need to move it down and look at the first column. 52.31. That's where the $32,000 needs to go. Do you see it?
Yes.
Okay. So since I increased that $8,000, we need to go back to...
So while you're right here, tell me, let me know if I'm correct on this. This budget, when it comes up before us, June 13th, we can't really change numbers per se on this without doing like another public hearing or something. But then we would make a motion to approve what specific changes such as this. Is that correct?
I think you're... I don't think you have to go to another public hearing if you're in the process of approving a budget and you change $8,000 to balance. I think you can do that without...
Okay. But I mean, do we need to then include that in our motion in June?
It can be. Yeah, yeah, yeah. If you have it corrected in the form, between now and then, it's what you publish as your last budget for voting purposes. If it's on there, you don't have to.
Thank you. Since we added that $8,000, we need to go to the beginning where it says 31.1 and you need to switch to $350,000 to $358,000. Unpage number nine. Three thousand eight instead of 350,000. Are there any other questions about the budget?
On line number 52.3500, travel, $7,000.
52.?
It's page 14, I believe. Travel. Travel, $7,000. There's also 52.3510, mileage reimbursement, $3,000. And there's also 523540, other travel, $3,400. What's the difference in travel and other travel?
Do you have your...
Yeah, I do. What's our number, say your?
52.35...
What was the number?
52.3500.
And 52.3540.
Remember how the mayor had us go around that time? Or Mr. Moore had us go around in the bus? That would be other travel. That would be like when they paid for the bus and the driver. That could be other travel. This travel, 52.35, is travel to... Yeah, to trainings. Sometimes we have our city clerk in the past and our municipal court clerk have had to travel. And I know that comes under travel reimbursement.
Okay. Also, the mayor gets, is it monthly travel stipend? So that falls under that as well.
Other travel?
It falls under travel.
Then what's mileage reimbursement?
Well, that could be the clerks. It could be public works. It could be council. It could be other. If we send Brian off to do something specific that he's getting mileage... Even mileage reimbursement could fall under that, but it also could be done differently. You know, maybe he rode with someone else and picked up the gas bill because they're going to class, you know? That's just off the wall. But there could be so many different things that would not be an actual mileage reimbursement. If you're not taking your own vehicle, but you're helping pay for the travel or, you know, went by some other means. Or, you know, I don't know how we handle when the clerk has to run errands. Do we give her mileage? Or do we give her travel money?
She's sitting right there.
Or does she get nothing? I don't know the answer to that right now.
How's that handled?
I mean, now we can take the city vehicle, but I've never been reimbursed for travel as far as doing errands for the city.
Have you never turned anything in?
As far as I know, I... We... There was never the option.
Soon you started?
I was never given the option.
And that's why we've put the code enforcement vehicle at their disposal at this point. When Greg was not here, they were working around each other to be able to use the vehicles. If you look at the 2024 budget of training, membership, MHR dues, other travel hotel, in the last budget, we were at 21, 24, 25, 26, 250.
Right, the numbers are very similar. They're just spread out.
Same numbers. It's just spread out into the right days based on the receipts that we went through. Are there any other questions?
On line 53.110, page 15, $10,000 for office supplies?
Yes, please.
That includes public works office supplies. They... Yeah, they're welcome. Code enforcement office supplies, council office supplies.
And these numbers were... You came up with these numbers based on actual receipts?
Yes, correct. If you look where we were in April at 6631 for office supplies, that was only...
Eight months in.
Eight months in. And we were at 6631. That would have been $800 a month, approximately, 800 plus. If we did 800 times 12, that's 96, 9600, right, 10,000. Prices go up and you have to take that into account.
Yeah, paper and ink is very, very...
Right. And we're looking at... If you see that there's a computer. There's computer money put aside, $7,500. Right now, for the...
Is that for the server?
No, that was something else. Right now, for our office staff, they have been hobbling along on computers that are so old, they can't... It takes them forever to do their jobs. We are finally at a point right now where we have updated Sonia's computer so she can work efficiently by taking my computer upstairs, taking it out of the office, getting it updated, bringing it back, switching it out for Sonia's. And now Sonia's is going out, getting it updated, bringing it back for Kimberly to use. And then Kimberly's is going out, getting it updated so our code enforcement officer can use it. We need new computers.
I was going to say, will they even take one of those 11? Because I know they were here when Kathy Glass was here. So I know they're at least five years old. And they're basic. They're basic PCs. They're not a high-end.
When something has gone wrong, it has been piecemeal together.
I was going to say, even when we got those, it was a company used that built their own, a local company that put this part from here and this part from there.
And it's continued that way.
Versus a nice computer with warranty.
Right, right.
Is Sonia able to do what she needs to do in corporate wear now?
She is now. Yep. We're praying that it gets... We get through until this budget is approved. We're hoping we make it through that because it's been that bad. Any other questions?
Line 7.1100. This is a question from the citizen. I promise to get an extra. Walton County Board of Commissioners, we give them $13,000?
Wait a minute. Let me see my notes here. That is the fee for billing property tax. It was put previously under $57,400,
In the second column?
Which is bad debt and that would not be the right category for that. If you're looking at the two columns there, essentially the left column is the numbers we will be using for the future. The second column is the numbers that have been used in the past.
So it was already in the budget and it was just in a...
In the wrong spot.
Right.
In the wrong line, yes.
And that's our fee that we pay for them to bill our property tax. And I don't think that's something we want to take on our shoulders. No, thank you.
Line number 531125, facility and ground supplies. And 531130, other general supplies. $20,001 and $10,000 the other. That's page 15.
I just have notes where they came from sometimes.
Which numbers are they in, Linda, please?
53.1125 and 53.1130.
I can tell you about those. I've gone around the city a number of times. And we'll discuss it later about the roof at the library and the city hall. There are... Public Works is lacking in any kind of equipment that they need, their tools. They don't have the necessary skills. They had a rake and they had one rake. And I said, Kat, what are you doing? And they were pushing things into a... They were picking things up with their hands and putting it on the truck. I said, why don't you have a barrel? Well, we weren't allowed to buy a barrel. I said, what are you talking about? It's a garbage can. Buy a barrel. And they had one rake. They are doing their job without the correct tools. There are... We have a handle in city hall that falls off every time you use it. There are little parts. There are little things. There are supplies. There are tools that have to be purchased that have not been purchased. And I worked it into the budget. The guys need tools to do their job effectively.
What's the difference in other general supplies and facility and ground supplies?
Maxine, would you read that?
Okay. All right. General supplies are expenditures for all supplies other than those listed below, which would be your energy, your water, your sewage, your food, your books for the operation of government, including freight. So it's kind of like every supply you can think of that didn't have its own category.
Like light bulbs or...
Filters or... If it's not an office supply, yeah. It can be so many different supplies. It can be blades for the lawnmower even. You know, need to attribute it to their department wherever it belongs. So that might... This portion of the budget might involve more than one department. And of course, we do have some department breakdowns. But it's kind of like all the supplies we have to buy, toilet paper and things like that can be included in that.
Of our facilities and grounds.
Page 22. General funds project. Got site improvements, park, some rec, municipal building, $22,000. Then on the bottom, it says other equipment. Public Works Building, new roof for library and city hall, $14,000. Are there one in the same?
Say that again, sorry. Up here at the top?
So parks and rec versus park, public works building, yes, they're two different things.
Parks and rec and the public works building are definitely two different buildings. Parks and rec is this park and this municipal building. And then we have public works building and library and city hall.
So $14,000 is what you're putting for the public works building?
No.
No, $14,000 is for a dump trailer that they have requested. The dump truck that they have, you can't start it on a cold morning. You can't start it on a good day. Where is this? This is public works building, new roof for library and city hall, $14,000. Oh, I'm sorry. I just put that in there twice. Did I put that in there twice? I made a mistake, yes.
Public works building needs to be taken out of that last item.
Oh, we just...
Yeah.
It's a typo. Sorry. So, yeah.
It probably was the wrong description.
The tiny word is the words public works building. It shouldn't be in there. She's like, you're telling me that's right here. This is for the public works building. It's the second item under that general funds project. It says buildings and building improvements, public works building and... Oh, it says it twice on here, and new roof for libraries.
Okay, probably the wrong description.
Take out the other equipment, public works building, $14,000 at the bottom.
But you need to take out the amount or was that supposed to be for other equipment? See, that's vehicles for the dump trailer. That's for other equipment. If they need a weed eater or a new lawnmower.
So the 14...
Was that what that was for? We just have the wrong description? We just have the wrong description?
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
So the fourteen thousand is for public works?
It is other equipment.
So the vehicles, dump trailer for public works?
That's right, that is correct.
Correct.
And the other equipment, what is it supposed to be?
The other equipment, like, we're looking at a new lawnmower. I've just been speaking with our public works manager, and we're going to be looking after the season to be getting a sale, because the machines we have right now are getting older, the number of hours on the engines are getting to a point where we have to start considering a new, new lawnmower.
Then new roof for library and city hall, needs to come out that line?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, now.
Off the very bottom.
Just change the description.
Yes.
It also, public works. Public works and other equipment, because it's not even necessarily just public works. If we needed a new window unit for the city hall, it could apply to that.
I will change that and get that out to you guys, I need to go back and look at my notes.
Okay.
That may have been those of us putting the book together picked up the wrong item.
Or it may be me. I don't know.
It could have been any of us. By the time we got to page twenty-two, we were probably a little bit nuts.
So it was...
Or anything else? That's all I got for now. No, hold on.
Okay.
Where did you budget the money for the Emerald Cove project?
Oh, I have it, no, I'm kidding, it's no, it's swastika. We have over seven hundred or eight hundred thousand dollars right now, I don't know the exact figure, in the swastika.
Right here, it says, we're nineteen swastikas, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars, five hundred and ten, or eight hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and ten dollars.
So that's what it'll be paid for.
That's what the funds are for, a swastika's funds are to be spent on projects.
That's okay, I just didn't know where you budgeted it.
Yeah.
But that's what, that's what the swastika money is earmarked for, right?
Right, right. All right, any more questions on the budget, guys?
No, no. But I will say, you know, between now and when we get ready to vote, if anyone wants to question any other items, I'm certainly available for what I have in my notes from the discussions.
I would just like to say thank you, guys, for putting together something that is so easy to comprehend. I really appreciate that.
Very nice to do this, yeah. We're very hard. Okay, we're going to move on to new business, the little library agreement. I've included the agreement there, does anybody have any comments or anything that may need to be made, some changes, or, or anything like that? We've already agreed to this, we said that we were going to have a contract drawn up. Is this something we need to go down, guys? I didn't think so. But does anybody have any comments? I always try to bring everything to you guys, not only so you see what's going on, but there will be one day that somebody else may choose to be there. And seeing all of these stoppages and learnings as we go along is very important. Anybody have any additions, additions, questions about that one?
Actually, yes. I'm so sorry. Looking for something that I saw on the Facebook. Because it was about Little Leopard, and it was how to protect your little library, keep it from, I'll have to look it up later, kind of keep it from being vandalized, or keep the people from taking every little thing out there all at once, so that there wasn't anything left. And again, for reselling, that was another thing, is that to stamp over the UPC code and say, this box still want to grow, little library, because most book dealers or people who are buying books won't buy them if they came from a little library. Just, just suggestions for her, or for us to help out with that.
Let me take over.
Yeah, also said fake camera.
No.
Put a fake camera.
Somebody's still out there.
Any comments on the little library here, guys?
No.
Okay. We're going to move on to the Rosenthal Wright Law Firm. Basically, we have already signed this. The attorney, Mr. Rosenthal, has gone off on his own with another solicitor from his old office, and they are, have opened their own firm, and they have continued to stay on as our solicitor for our municipal court. And so we just have to sign a new engagement letter, and so I wanted to let you all know about that and let you see that. Any questions about that? Okay. We're going to move on to tree removal. Our public works manager brought to my attention that we have four trees that need to be removed. We're having a beetle infestation on the pine. We have one over by the ball field, which is dangerously leaning. And you can see the pictures on the estimate from Georgia Tree and Dump. And then we have a few more over here. We're going to be grinding out the stumps on three of them. And one of them is the one over by the ball field, it's on an incline like this, and they're going to get it down close to the ground. We don't need to grind that one out, okay, so it saves on some money. We have estimates from Georgia Tree and Dump, along with certificate of liability, and a certificate of existence, and we also have a Fiddlemore Tree Care, El Cien, and SafeCo Tree Service. SafeCo Tree Service is the company that came before, the previous mayor hired them to take out a bunch of trees. And I believe their, Kimberly, was there an issue with them getting everything removed?
Yes.
What was that issue? They eventually did, right?
Yeah, it took them a while to clean up, so they got the trees down, and then they didn't do the cleanup for, from what I understand, for a few days.
Okay, but it did get done.
It did get done, it just wasn't immediate.
Okay. Was it not done because, did they think they were finished with the job, and the city wasn't happy with the job, and that's why they had to come back out, or, do you know what that issue was?
I'm a hundred percent sure Brian could answer that, because he worked closely with him. I just know that it wasn't done right after, and we had to wait for them to kind of clean it up.
Thank you.
I do have a question, because when those other trees were cut, it just so happened, I went by that day, and I saw all of our city workers out there helping with it. So would that involve...
Our city employees will not be outside, we don't have an outside venue, absolutely not. They might show them where it is, they might close off a road for safety issues, but they will not be donning chainsaws, pulling...
Well, and that's just about, you know, when I say I saw them helping, I saw them pulling some branches and things, so I didn't know the deal at the time, and that's why I wanted to know what was this, all of them, or was it joint effort?
These are, this is for...
Because that may make a difference to me.
Yeah, no, we will not have our...
No, I don't want to endanger them by cutting trees.
Our public works manager, I asked him, are any of these favorite trees were the ones that he felt comfortable doing? And he said no. And they are pretty, pretty big trees, and there's one right here, that is being taken out. So we have liability insurance on everybody, guys. They're all valid companies, we've met them all out here. There is one of the companies who also noticed that we had a, another tree down here, dogwood tree that's dead, and he said he would do that just as a, an additional for free. So, are there any thoughts on...
Who was the one that said they have a dogwood tree that they would remove, was it Falcone or Flats?
I think it actually says it, I think it's out. Okay. You look.
I think we put that in the hands of the mayor and the public works manager, and he'll make the decision.
Right. They're all basically under the five thousand dollar emergency, but I bring it to you for your direction, because I am using that five thousand dollar emergency contingency for emergencies. I'm not using it for this type of thing. So if you guys feel that, you can leave it up to the public works manager and myself, I'm fine with that, but I wanted to show you all.
Yeah, I don't see, they need to come back to us for a formal approval.
I don't know, we're in a, I mean, I would say, just want to choose options. I'll be, that's good.
But, I wouldn't go with, I have a lot of faith in all of them.
Right.
Met them all, except for SafeCo, Brian met them. But they all somehow are recommended, so as long as everybody's okay with that. You can do that, right? Can we do that, or do we have to have a vote on that?
You're gonna go with the low bidder.
Low bidder, right.
Yeah.
Okay. They're real close, by a hundred percent.
Right. I'm concerned about that one tree alone, but all of them.
Yeah.
And I'd like to get those down. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on with the next Erin Wadley with LMCO on-call agreement. I met with Mr. Wadley. I spoke about the stormwater drain-off issues we are having, we even have some more now. And I've never done stormwater drain-off, and I don't claim to be an expert in it. And he does something called, kind of on-call. We can call him when we need help with different expertise-type issues. And so that's why I brought that to you, for you to review, and he will be here at the next meeting, and we can also ask him additional questions about that. It's not a, like what we've done with the engineering for Emerald Cove, it's not a lump sum. He, just, and you can see the hourly rates that he has. It's an option, right now we do this with Precision Plating, and there's no harm in having another engineering company that we have an on-call agreement with, to be able to help us out with different things.
I agree. Especially given his experience in the building, and construction.
He used to work for a city, and he did, he's worked for, I believe, a county too. And he has lots of experience. Did you see that?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, so if you have any questions about that or any concerns, we can talk about it now, or we can go ahead and vote on it at the next meeting, after you have a chance to stop there. Anything, guys? Nothing?
No.
We're going to go ahead and move on to grass cutting on private property versus an easement. Just so we can get clarification from anybody listening, and so that we as a council are clear, I've asked Tony to go ahead and share with us what is city property, what is not city property? Easement versus private property? What is our responsibility?
When the subject came up, there weren't any specific applications, but, but it gets to be humorous a little bit as to what's city property. When you're in Emerald Cove, the streets are more than likely fifty feet in width, a street easement area. Your pavilion area is about twelve and a half, so you have a twelve feet of green grass in front of your house if you live in a subdivision like that, that's actually part of the street. And so when it comes to, okay, you're gonna make me cut my grass, when, when it took some of the pass show up and didn't cut the last twelve and a half feet, because that's long city property, that kind of stuff. So, lots of issues in subdivisions, the right-of-way is really well-designated. Citizens regularly cut their front yard completely, and it includes a little section that's actually part of the... Other areas, like your state highways, which you have two in your city, it becomes very difficult to tell exactly where the right-of-way begins and ends. And in some instances, there are records on, in the deeds, where you can actually determine the exact width and locate it. But in a lot of instances, it was done restrictively, the road was there before, even state highways, even state highways. And in that instance, you're going to be measuring it from the engraved area, which is commonly referred to as the, as the private property side of the ditch. You know, and everything in between is where the public right-of-way. And, and I think there, that's probably where the city has had some issues with regard to are we on private property or are we on... And, and if you've got a public utility, public utilities are always putting theirs either on their own or public right-of-way, which is rare. Usually they're getting it in the public right-of-way, so if you've got a hole and a guy wire and that sort of thing at an intersection of two roads, that's probably public property. I mean, that's more than likely. And so usually it becomes a maintenance issue for the city because of the intersection and the misbanding of the road, which we have some duty to, to keep cutting no matter what there is implied. And some of those instances where you have to keep it cut, so. You know, that's probably the description I would give you, is that, is that we shouldn't be cutting on private property where, where it's purely private property, and you, you know that. We can't use our public funds on those areas. In areas close to state highways and ditches and utility areas, more than likely that's going to be a public right-of-way area, and it should be maintained by the city or by the state. The state's not good at maintaining their right-of-way, and so most cities, I see this every day, most cities maintain state right-of-ways in areas that are sensitive to the city as far as beautification. They're, they're cutting the grass in the median on Peachtree Investor in Boulevard every day, and the city beaver, the city beaver is doing it because they care what the city looks like. And so it's, 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 in those instances, this is shared governmental purpose. And usually they communicate with the state that, you know, we want to be maintaining that, and usually there's an agreement that evidence is that maintenance, when it is, when you're actually just doing it for the benefit of the state, but it's a part of the city's maintenance.
So I've spoken with our public works manager, and what we are going to be doing is, there is one neighborhood on a state road that is not kept up by an HOA, and it's...
Broken era.
Broken era. On those corner lots, there is a utility, it's either an AT&T or Comcast. And so we will be doing that area and the corner and along the road, in city property, and on the other side of that entrance, we will keep it up. It won't be kept up, like someone's front yard's going to be kept up, but it will be kept up to make sure that there is no safety issue in turning out. Also along Park Street, a lot of the homes along Park Street have been doing an amazing job in keeping their yards up, including from the sidewalk over to the street. There are a few homes who have not done that, public works will begin to do that. And also, that is also a storm drainage area, and that is our responsibility to keep that up, and so our public works department will be doing that. There is an issue with Cambridge Chase and Magnolia Springs that has been brought up. Their parks, both of their parks are owned by their HOAs. The fact that their HOAs are defunct doesn't really matter, it's still private property and it's owned by those HOAs. Those neighborhoods are responsible for those areas. Now, we did have a council member who had a great idea. What if we sent out an invitation to the homeowners in those neighborhoods and invited them to come to a council meeting and say, "Come, let's talk about a solution." We've spoken before, there is the opportunity for the city to have the property deeded over. The city then starts taking care of the property. In the future, there's a possibility for pocket parks if we decide to do that. But in the meantime, that will be city property if the neighborhood decided to deed it over. I even spoke to somebody in Cambridge Chase, Mr. Criswell. He called me, he asked me about it. I posed that to him, he thought it was a fantastic idea. He asked if you should come to this meeting, I said, "You're always welcome to come." I said, "But we're going to go ahead and discuss it and possibly send out a letter, and you'll get one, everybody will get one, and everybody's invited. We will talk with our attorneys, Mr. Powell and Mr. Crowley, we'll find out the right process to do that, if the neighborhoods are on board." When I spoke to Mr. Criswell, I said, "This is something that is a possibility that the city and council can do, but we will need your help along with other citizens, because people will have to sign off on it if we want to go the nice route." The other route is just taking it, and I'm really not interested in just taking somebody's property. I don't know how you all feel, but that's an option too.
Well, that would be considered in the domain, and you get that out to citizens and they will show up. Right, and it's not, they're not going to be happy about it, so it'd be nice to get their signatures.
Yeah.
And so what, do you have to have, like, fifty-one percent of the homeowner's signature?
All of them?
Yeah, you would, you would, you know, normally, the way cities get, get that property is because it hadn't taxes enough paid on it, you know, that's, that's usually the easiest way.
Taxes.
Well, that, that shouldn't be happening. Well, that shouldn't be happening. And if it's private property, then it shouldn't have a tax bill associated with it. So it gets... Usually, that's the way. They haven't paid it, it's been out there. They probably have forgotten about selling it even at the county level. And you just end up buying it for taxes, and it clears up. That's usually the easiest way. Otherwise, everybody who has a lot has an interest in the recreation area. You have to get everybody's sign off on it. You always have the ability to do it, and if it doesn't have much value, you still have to pay that owner's association whatever fair amount of value it will cost. There are a lot of parks in communities that have... They have miniature soccer fields, you know, they're stacked. You take a little bit of patience, stamp it to two, and they become very popular attractions. Association needs to know that. You're gonna have... If you give a city purpose in a place like this, it's gonna have some noise that goes with it and a lot of fun. And so whether it's basketball courts or soccer fields, they can all be fit in small areas like that and be very useful to the community.
Same open to the whole community?
I was gonna say, so my understanding is, for instance, if Magnolia Springs, who wanted us to come cut their park, says, "Well, we'll just give you this park then." Once we have it, then it's also everyone else's park.
Absolutely.
So anyone can come there and park and park down their street and participate. Also, does the city have any responsibility to keep it as a park setting, or does it then belong to the city to do with as they please?
Do whatever they please, yeah. Unless it's given with a restriction. If the homeowners association did get together and all decided they wanted to give it to the city, and they put a restriction on it, then it could have...
But we're not required to accept it with that restriction?
No, and it would revert back to them if you didn't want to do that.
Keep in mind, too, Magnolia Springs did cut their park. So somebody cut it. I don't know who did it, but somebody cut it. So, thank you, Thomas. Any questions on that question? Okay. The insurance claim, we contacted our insurance company and had them look at the library and City Hall and all of the little buildings right by City Hall. And they all had hail and wind damage, and they were all approved to be replaced. And so we're gonna be getting new roofs on the library, City Hall, and all the little buildings. And we have some quotes for that that we can show you guys, too. And we can either go with the same method as before or myself and the Public Works Manager deciding on that, or we can go with what you guys want. Erica was instrumental in that. She met with the adjuster and the insurance agent, and two of the... We worked together to get the quotes in for the roof. And we're happy to say that the companies are also going to be able to fix the siding that is missing or rotten and near the doors, and get the interior that has had a leak now for a little while and get that fixed and then painted.
Of course, Sonia has had a bucket under her desk because the roof has leaked so terribly.
I came in and I said, "What is that?" When I first came on board, and I went with a little leak. And I said, "Okay." So we got right on that. And so it's nice to know that the roofs are going to be replaced. We won't have to worry about that for another 30 to 50 years, depending on the shingle that we go with.
And all covered under the insurance?
All of it's covered under insurance, yep.
Ma'am, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask it to Erica?
Absolutely.
You do this for like thirty you like best for this job. Because they're very close in numbers, except...
Okay, I have a question for...
Are we obligated to take the lowest bid?
What are we talking about?
Each company has two bids, one for City Hall and one for the library.
What time is it? As you said that, is this that works as a municipal building? Is that City Hall? I want to clarify that.
Which one are we looking at, Maxine?
It's Roof Georgia, ask them to.
If the other one says Library for Roof Georgia, then yes.
Okay. There's no way that that price, that's for City Hall. There's no way that's the library price.
Library is large.
Right, right. But I want to make sure when we're talking this building.
They're gonna be fixing the tiles. They've given the money for tiles in the library to be replaced also.
Tony has some important...
No, no, yeah, the question was, do you have to take the low bidder? This is on insurance repair. This is repair expense. We're usually looking for the low bidder in that situation.
As long as everything is equal?
Yes, there can be grounds for not taking someone that's disqualified of bidding.
Right.
So looking at the bids I will put out there, the roof fee is high. The other two, one's lower on one, one's lower on the other. My advice is to figure out which one has the best warranty and what product they're using. And because they're so close, I would go with the one that has the best warranty.
Is everybody comfortable if I work with Erica on this? I made a decision?
Yes. I mean, just a cursory look between Four Brothers and Roof. Four Brothers has a six-year warranty on labor, no leak, no payment due of completion. And then here, Roof Georgia, it says 10-year labor warranty. Shingles have a lifetime limited warranty through nature. And it says lifetime warranty on materials before others. So I mean, and the prices are so... They're parallel.
It's nice to know they're all so close.
Yeah. There's hardly any difference between these two companies.
And the Four Brothers have that six-years warranty on labor also.
Yeah.
Are you all comfortable if I work with Erica on this?
Yeah.
Is everybody okay with that?
Hi. Yes, she does this first.
Is that okay? Yeah? All right.
Can we know that's honest?
It's insurance gonna cover 100%.
100%. We already have the money.
The checks are already in.
When you decide when he's doing it, unless someone...
Sure, absolutely. Okay. All right, let's keep moving along. All right, telecommunications and right-of-way management. I thought we were gonna just be... I was just gonna be able to do this, but I can't. We have to have a resolution. So with that being said, what this does is they go out, this organization through GMA, and they look for the...
Franchise fees.
Yes, the franchise fees that are not being collected right now, the things we can stay out on. I spoke to the city social circle, Eric over there, and I asked him what he thought about this. And at first, he's like, "Ah." He goes, "Wait a minute, no, we did do that, and we did get a lot of money from AT&amp;T." So Rachel brought this to my attention. I think I had brought it up to you guys before, but I wanted to bring it back because this is something that we will have to vote on at the next meeting since we have to do a resolution, right? Is it a resolution? Yeah. It costs like a little bit under $1,000 for one year. If we choose after one year not to use them anymore, then we don't need to use them.
Is there a reason that we shouldn't use them for longer than a year?
Maybe we're still not letting them. New houses coming in, we've got... Children's coming in, the kids coming through.
Did they say something? I'll have to go back and read it, but my head's saying that they said something about managing that for us and seeing that they stay up to date, and they more or less check our policies than us having to maintain them.
Right, yeah.
So...
And $1,000 is very low.
I was gonna say.
Isn't it, will it be $1,000 if we, the first year, will be right under $1,000, will it continue to be that same price?
It's based on our population. That's how their pricing scale is. It's a scale that moves with your population, so...
But then they say send out the letters to everybody. They make sure we're getting what we're doing.
Yep. Any questions on that one? We'll see that one on our next panel.
No, because when I look at what we have coming in for a franchise currently, and we look at where are we actual, we have nothing on gas.
Oh, well, we know that they got a lot.
Except their trucks. More than a gallon.
Oh, my gosh. Twenty-seven giant trucks yesterday.
Okay. Any questions? Nothing? Good. I don't need to be rushing anybody, guys. So if I'm moving too fast, please let me know. The next thing is the library parking lot seal coating and striping. The... We've got quotes for seal coating and striping the parking spaces for both the library and for City Hall. Both parking lots are in pretty good shape, and this is something we should be doing to save on the life of the pavement in those parking lots. We've gotten two quotes. They're both local gentlemen, both licensed. Both with the state. We have Metter's seal coating and striping, and then we have Daniel Wood. I know that when I spoke with Mr. Metter's, he's been a former citizen for quite some time, and he also works for the counties. They hired him on to do some of their stuff. Their prices are... Where are the other two prices?
For the library, do you see it? For the southern-style striping, the library is $374. And then for City Hall, it's... $21.73. That's for southern-style striping. I do not have the other one.
You don't have this one?
No.
Let's see here. Here's Metter's seal coating for the library, which is right on the... With him? Yeah, it's $35.40 for this one. And then one of them is $26, this is $21, so, okay. Less than $500, less than $100.
So where are we getting the funds for that?
For the seal coating? Fortunately, some of those funds that are coming in for the roofs are in excess of what we need.
Ooh.
So we were able to do a few things.
Okay, I won't complain.
Did we do another bid other than the Daniel Woods?
We do. Did you not get that one?
I apologize.
Here you go.
Me, too, please.
Jimmy, go make your copy of them real quick.
Is everybody comfortable with Brian and I going forward with this, folks, again? Going with the low bid based on the warranty, something like that? They said that it's between... They said that they're between three and five years, so it's good.
You know, looking at timeline, too, because one, I might say we're good, and then they say, "Well, we can't come after three months," and the other one...
When I spoke to both of them, they both said that we'd be able to do it. We're gonna be doing it at the library on a weekend where there's no projects going on, no events going on. But we spoke with Dana and her direct supervisor, and some of the means that they have are these, along with pressure washing. And they're concerned about the roof, but we haven't totally had it. Thanks.
Okay, Dana will be there. There's a leak in her office.
Yes, there is. Fortunately, we checked with Erin, there have been no damage to any books or any of the items in there or furniture. It's just a... They're happy about it.
Were any of these companies able to do like from underneath to know what kind of damage we might have to under the shingles? I know they allow...
We made those allowances based on some of the leaks they've seen in the library. But, you know, when you cut your own roof, then they pull that stuff up, and sometimes...
Sometimes it's not wrong, sometimes it's like, oh, my gosh.
I know each one of these bids, the two lower bids for the roofs, both include four pieces of this B. So that is, I mean, City Hall may need more than that, but I won't hit the lower.
I would bet City Hall's gonna need more than that. The roof is in very bad shape. Is everybody okay with Brian and I choosing the seal coating?
Yes.
Based on going with the lower quote, based on warranty and availability. Okay. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the sewer plant hay cutting removal. And just to preface this, Brian and I met with somebody who is local, and he, his father, and his grandfather father do this sewer plant or field hay cutting, and then they rake it, and then they roll it or they veil it and whatnot. And they were looking to do it for the city sewer plant. So we met with him. Brian is very comfortable with this young man. And he and his family have been doing this for years and have their own equipment and whatnot. Unfortunately, the only thing they don't have after we spoke with Jay is they don't have liability insurance. They have insurance for all of their trucks. Do you want to go ahead and talk a little bit about that? I don't want to tell... I'm just talking about if we do an agreement without liability insurance. Also, when I saw Ms. Linda the other day at the municipal dinner, and I shared that with them, she asked me about, "Are we gonna bond that?" Could you share with us if bonding is something that would be done in this situation? Would it allow us to do what we need to do without a liability insurance? Or what are your thoughts on that?
Tony and I talked about it a little bit. The only real concern would be, you know, and this seems to happen, because I think Erin spoke that we already have a budget for replacing the sprinkler heads. And so they're bound to hit some of those. We put that in a contract that they just reimburse the city if that happens. We think we can go for it without insurance and feel comfortable, given that the sprinklers are relatively cheap.
And expensive.
We're not concerned about them damaging something so much and then not being able to pay the...
And when Brian and I were over there speaking with this young man, Brian said that he and his crew would make sure that the lower sprinklers that are below the grass have a flag so that he could see it the first time. He also said that they talked, and they said that the first time they do it, as they're learning it, they're just gonna go down the roads and then go across. And then anything left over, Brian and his crew would go ahead and take care of, so that they would kind of work in tandem. This family wants to do this. They take the veils pay and take it off, and whatever they do with it, they choose to do with it. And they will not be charging the city any money. This will free up a lot of Brian's time not having to do this, because it's usually done two to three times in the heat of summer.
And it sometimes takes two, three days to get the whole...
It does. It does. This family, they said that they would come in the first day and cut, and then the second day probably, or second or third day, they would come and rake it and then veil it at that time. I guess there's a process to it. I'm learning all sorts of things. We talked about leaving equipment on their equipment on site. There's plenty of room for it. Brian agreed that that was not a problem. They have their own insurance on all of their equipment. And in this agreement, we've made them aware that we are not responsible for their equipment, the gate is locked, but we are not responsible. The city's not responsible.
Wouldn't they get hurt while they're in the building?
Next question.
We have insurance. You'd be reliant on your own insurance for that.
Can we put it in the agreement that they are not, we are not responsible in the agreement, so they can't file a claim against the insurance?
You can add an indemnity provision. But you're getting an indemnity from a company that doesn't have insurance. And so it wouldn't, you know, I'm not sure of the financial capability of the folks, but I wouldn't rely too much on an indemnity coming from that side of it. You know, because if they had a lot, they would have insurance of their own. And you can't bond. There's no real bonding for this. Somebody's gotta have liability insurance.
Anybody have any thoughts, any further questions?
If we do something like where our liability covers them, would that be only under the circumstance if we had something that created the situation? Versus, let's say, they're out there working, and somebody decides to get crazy with something, and they get hurt because of their own fault? Does that kind of call our insurance company to decide was it their fault or our fault?
It's gonna be the court. You know, that's what a lot of trials are about. Who's responsible? And so it'll... Circumstances are, we're not responsible for their negligence. And that's what we're saying, is that's most of the time. So it's not an employee or somebody working out there for them that we are concerned about. It's what they... It's what they would damage of ours while they're out there.
Yeah, I was thinking more in terms, you know, you hear forest stories about somebody walked in a store and falls down and soos the store. You know. The cleaning crew says they got hurt, even though they were a private contractor.
This is not that, and we would have an agreement with them, the construct service. So, we'll add that many, and we're going ahead and.
There's one in there already, but we can beef it up if you need.
Okay. And you all have a copy? I just got that to you today because I decided to add that one. We'll have a discussion on that, guys. Yeah?
Well, we need to vote on that.
Yeah, I think you can tell us that, yeah.
Send me on the next week.
Just while we're on that, so, there are things that were obviously not items to vote on, which you've already approved. You don't have to, but you could on the library structure. Agreement, yeah. But, but on most of those things, and I encourage efficiency and operations, and I think that's what y'all are trying to achieve.
Right.
But a lot of these things could be sort of borderline approvals. So, what I would suggest is that you put these on a consent agenda as a one-vote item on the long string. And, and what it does is it gives you a report back. You, you know, you want to know which one was negotiated and concluded. Where are you getting the vote on it? You'll see it in that consent agenda. It'll just be a motion approved, no discussion allowed, is that, and that way, when the committee comes to you, the packet, you'll see it all, proven in one motion, and really, the reason to do this is to protect the mayor and, and your executives, so that there's, there's no question. You've got a record of a vote on those things. Not just slow them down or do anything. It's just, it'll appear on consent agenda and get lost.
Great.
Yeah, great.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Danny. Okay.
We get clarity on that.
Sure.
So, essentially, if there was one thing in that item that one of us, let's say, had a problem with, we probably should pull that out of the consent agenda before it gets, before.
When you, when you're approving your agenda that night, a consent agenda, anything can be pulled off of it. Now, what you, what you're discussing, what, what's really being talked about in this instance is, hey, this isn't only one we pull off. If you're, if you're saying, "Mayor, go ahead and get this stuff done,"
Right.
Then, then it's not a pull-off item.
And that's why I would kind of wait clarity, because, not that I have objection to anything we've discussed tonight, but let's suppose I did have, or I get home and I look at it again, and I had thought, "Wait, wait a minute. I don't like this because..."
It's, it's really too bold. You know, it's sort of the way the communication's going. It's very efficient, very effective. And, and the mayor is really looking forward to getting the roofly fixed, and so, we're doing, we're doing some things to say, "Okay, let's move forward." It's probably within her, her emergency authority to do it anyway. But, but even with emergency authority, you would want it to be blessed by consent agenda by the council ultimately to protect. So, if there's things on there that you don't have done until you see what the bid is going to be, then I would let the mayor know. If, if we have things on there that we just want to go ahead and get done, there's a choice to be made, and the group wants to see the report on the choice, then turn her loose to do her thing and report it back on the consent agenda and just approve the consent agenda. If you, if you have something on that group image, say, "Hey, I don't, I don't want the mayor and the, and the director of public utilities to move forward until I see it and prove it," then that needs to be said too, because she was, she's been asking on every item, "Can I go ahead? Can I go ahead? Can I go ahead?" So, if we're going, if you want to pull any of those things back,
Let me know now.
then you need to let her know now. And otherwise, you can see them and vote on them, but it happens to be on.
But that's what I'm saying. Now would be the time to pull them down.
And you've got a whole bunch of stuff that you can put on it, a consent agenda, after you have a work session, which it really shortens your meeting. You don't debate those things.
Okay.
And so, so over, over time, using that for a lot of things is a really good idea and time saver. And when they come up without the discussion that we had, if you see one on the consent agenda and, and you just want to debate it, you just pull it off when you approve the agenda.
Okay. I like that idea. Okay, so we are going to, we need to go to an executive session to discuss personal allocation and or real estate tonight. So, do I have a, I'll make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's do it.
Uh-oh, the lights went off.
I was connected to that one there.
That's alright.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion. Go back into the regular meeting.
Is there a second? Is that right? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a, thank you.